Anybody want to be heard? And save it for later. Communications, employee introductions. Sergeant Beffet, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. Excited to appear before you guys tonight and introduce our three latest hires. First, directly to my left is dispatcher Kim Tevo. She took the place of Donna Anderson, who retired in August. Kim gives us some experience from the Princeton and Sterling Police Departments. Sterling, she still works there part-time. She holds a degree from Mount Waukesha Community College. She successfully competed her field training with the other dispatches, and she's currently assigned to the 11 to 7 shift.
Welcome, Bob. Welcome.
Next to Kim is Officer Peter Leveque. He started on December 20th with the retirement of Sergeant John Agnew. Previous full-time employee of the Munson Police Department. Previously worked for the Brimfield and Sturridge Police Departments. He has specialized training in advanced impaired operator DUI detection. Graduate of the Boyleson Police Academy. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Becker College. Little side note, going through school, he worked for Arnie Ossenall here in town, so we gave him a little heads up on learning the streets. After his field training, he worked a short stay on the 11 to 7 shift, and then now was assigned to the 3 to 11 shift. And our last hire started on January 21st. This is Jason Stranitzky. Lot of consonants in that last name. He took the place of resigned Officer Sullivan. Previous full-time employment with the Shirley Police Department. Also worked for the Charlton and Brimfield Police. One thing that I liked out of his resume is he had some work with Homeland Security. He was actually a worker and helped the citizens during the tornado crisis in the Brimfield area. He's got some specialized training in field training, narcotics, and also a motorcycle unit. After his field training, he's going to work our 6:00 at night till 2:00 in the morning shift.
Nice.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Very good.
Best of luck.
Best of luck.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, guys. Good night.
Young blood continues. Just a footnote, nomination for the Meritorious Service Award should be submitted to the Board of Selectmen's Office by March 21st. That was mine. Nomination forms are available on the town website, also at the town administrator's office. Again, they're due by March 21st, so if you have anybody, please submit them. New business. Three of my favorite people sitting here. Discussion, annual meeting with the delegation. Mr. Administrator, I'll turn it to you at this point.
I'm going to add a chair up front and then invite Senator Ann Goby and Representatives Donald Bertham and Peter Durant. Welcome this evening, folks. Something we look forward to every year at this time of year. We incorporate it into our calendar, and that is this joint meeting, which gives us a great opportunity as we kick off our budget season and, you know, the bill season that they're going to be going through. We polled the board for some different questions and concerns that they may have and forwarded them to the three of them, and obviously, things that come up every year is the current budget that we're dealing with and FY '16, and then next year, how that outlook, the forecast, in addition to some specific things of concern like Chapter 70 funding, Chapter 90, and others. So, as we usually do, we turn it over to you and let you guys divvy it up however you see fit.
Sounds fine. I have a few things. I spoke with Senate Ways and Means Chair Karen Spilker, and I asked her if she would be kind enough to put together a little handout for me, which she did, and it's just an overview of the governor's budget that he came out with, and I have a couple extra copies, but not too many. Do you guys want a copy?
Yeah.
Yeah. Color, man. Not too bad, the color. It didn't sound that great. Basically, when I was speaking with Karen, and Donnie heard this earlier today, too, I said to her, you know, as you're looking at the budget, you know, did anything really stick out? She said, you know, when I go through a budget, I look for two things. I look for the old wiles or the oh shucks. And she said, there really wasn't either in this, which depends on how you look at it, as good or as bad. But it's a pretty, you know, across the board, it's a pretty basic budget as far as, you know, the revenues. The governor took a very modest approach, looking at maybe about a little over 4% increase for growth, which is a modest look at that. Hopefully, we will do better, but that's, you know, that's fine for him to do that. I think that makes good fiscal sense to do that sort of thing. Couple of things that are not so great, that are, we are in danger of having our bond rating going down, and of course, you know what that means for the municipalities, which is not a good thing. So, we do need to start putting more money into our rainy day fund. The governor has proposed a fair amount, and I would expect that the House and Senate may even propose even more money to be put into that, because I think that that's something that you're going to hear more and more about. So, as far as some of the, and I don't have to go read it to you, I just brought it so that you can kind of take a look at some of the highlights or lowlights, depending, again, how you would look. Some of the things that you are going to see, some major increased funding, is for substance abuse. We are very well aware of the opiate crisis that we are in, and according to Secretary Sutter, who testified today at the Ways and Means hearing, she does not even see us as even being close to even the pinnacle of how bad it will be. So, she feels that we're just, we're actually still climbing up that hill. The governor put a substantial amount of money in looking for treatment areas. Donnie and I were at a meeting earlier today in Ware, and of course, the area, Ware has one of the highest per capita for drug overdoses. You know, we're looking statewide at four to five deaths a day to the opiate crisis, and, you know, it just, the numbers are just horrendous, and it hits everybody. This community has been hit. Every community has been hit, and I imagine every single person sitting here has probably been to more than one funeral because of it. So, we understand that we need to put some investment into that. The governor has understood that, and again, you will see something, and the House and Senate have both done a bill that is currently in conference that I expect will be coming out, hopefully, within the next few weeks, to address some of their ideas on how to handle some of the crisis and some of the monies that they will want to put into it, including to have funding at the schools, to have a dedicated person. We know that we don't like to hear about any unfunded mandates. In this case, it would be a funded position, funded curriculum, to help kind of stem the tide somewhat. We know that early intervention is really a key to many of these things. DCF will see an increase after the horrendous stories that, again, that we heard last year with DCF, to put more people out. When Peter and Donnie and I have been to different meetings, we hear that over and over again, that, you know, the caseloads are just too high, that we need to have more people investigating. And one thing that comes up, you know, sometimes people say, well, gee, you know, 30 cases may not sound like a lot for one person, but when each case may have 15 or 20 contacts, when you're dealing with parents and stepparents and foster parents and schools and attorneys, so one case can have all sorts of people that that one social worker, one caseworker, has to deal with. So, there is a fairly substantial investment into DCF and to put more people in. At the same time, the governor had the early retirement plan that went into effect last year. We're seeing some of the effects of that. There aren't as many people in some areas. We lost some good people in state government that had very good institutional knowledge, and I don't know if you've run into it, but I know that sometimes we're calling places for help for constituents, whether it's Mass Health or it's RMV, you're getting someone who hasn't been on the job for too long, and it's taking longer to get answers, and people are getting a little bit more frustrated. So, that kind of goes with some of the early retirement things that had happened. So, that's just a very basic overview. I know that you have some other questions. I don't know if you want me to start going through some of the list, how you wanted to do things, if you want to add. You want me to keep going? Nice, okay.
Whatever you need.
All right, okay.
So, you are asking.
As far as 9C cuts, the governor did make some 9C cuts earlier this year, but they were really, he did not go after AMAC, as had been done in earlier when we ran into that sort of issue. This time, because of gasoline costs, fuel costs being so low, he was able to go back in and to go back into accounts and to take monies, if you will, that weren't used for gasoline, for fuel accounts. So, that was a lot of it. One area that did get hit, and I know it was up on one of your questions, was tourism. There has been some issues at Mass Office of Tourism. Some things, obviously, the governor was not happy with there because he did give a pretty substantial cut, 9C cut, to Mott, and I think that that was probably a little shakeup to them to do that. Unfortunately, that does have effects in our area. Central Mass, you know, we have about 3,000 people that are directly employed in the tourism industry. We have a tourism trust fund that's used from the room occupancy tax that goes into that trust fund. We know that it generates something like $500 million of generation for folks coming into Massachusetts, and that's central Massachusetts, and that translates to about another $10 million in taxes that go back and local taxes, too. So, we know that we want to keep our tourism kind of strong, obviously. It's the, I believe right now, I think it's the number three economic driver in Massachusetts. And so, that was one of the 9C cuts that was hit. I would expect that in the House and Senate budget, they will try to do a little bit better than what the governor had done. The House budget will be coming out roughly the third week in April. They will debate that right after Patriots' Day, and then, of course, the Senate will have their bite at the apple about the third week in May. The Senate budget tends to usually be a little bit better, because we, fortunate, we have those April revenue figures. So, we have a more accurate picture of what the revenues are for the state, and so that's why when Senator Brewer was a senator, you know, he was able to come out and, you know, always put more money, but that's just the way it is. You know, the Senate has those numbers, so you have an opportunity, if it is appropriate, that you're able to make some revenue adjustments and to put money into things that may not have been able to be funded. On the Chapter 70, we know that there was a Foundation Review Commission that was in full force over the course of the last year and a half. In November, they came out with their final set of recommendations, and it was a pretty lengthy list. As you know, that the foundation budget, the calculations have not been redone since 1993 was when that formula went into place. You're probably hard-pressed to find one person who can explain the formula to you, never mind three or four, and it shouldn't be like that. But it will also be a multi-year task to make any substantial changes to that formula, because just, as you know, as soon as you make a change in one place, and the effect that it has somewhere else. Few things that were looked at, that I think that you will see things done sooner than later, and some of the special education costs, and trying to figure out some ways to handle some of those spend costs. So, I do think you'll see something, there'll be full funding a circuit breaker, I fully expect that you'll see in the House and Senate budget. I am advocating very strongly for more increases for the regional school transportation. It's always been kind of my pet project. Even if we could get it up to 80%, I would be thrilled this year, and that's kind of, I've asked the members of the caucus, I'm the Senate Chair on the Regional Transportation Caucus, Kim Ferguson, who's the rep from Holden, Kim is my House Chair, and that is what we're really kind of driving into everyone when they go to meet with their Ways and Means Chair, whether it's Brian Dempsey on the House side or Karen Spilker on the Senate side, 80%, 80%, 80%. Obviously, we'd like to have it at 100%, but understanding the fiscal restraints, if we could get 80%, that would be a big help, obviously, to the communities. There is a bill pending right now that John Rogers in the House filed that has to do with making all the recommendations of the Foundation Review Commission to go into effect. Well, that would take millions upon millions of dollars, and so, it's great that he filed that bill. I was speaking with Mary just before the meeting. The suburban coalition has formed in asking for letters to go out to the governor, asking for increases in Chapter 70. There's about eight or nine communities, school districts that have signed on, including Quabog and Lester in that area, and I would expect others will sign on to get the message to the governor, because I know that people were upset that his Chapter 70 numbers were not as high as they have been in the past. The Voke Transportation Bill, there's still a number of bills that are in committee. The Education Committee and all committees have until March 16th to either release a bill favorably or not. They can ask for extensions, but I'm expecting that the majority of bills, there are more than 6,000 bills that were filed in this legislative session, will, you'll have an answer on those by that third week in March. Chapter 90, the governor came out with $200 million. Would like to do for Chapter 90, and as soon as he came out with that, it wasn't 10 minutes that I did not have my first call from, it wasn't from, it wasn't, it wasn't, but it was from another DPW, which I wasn't going to mention, Donnie, but that's okay.
Well, he was the first one, right?
Saying, we need 300 million, we want that other 100 million, and I'm sure Mass Municipal Association will be advocating for the 300 million for Chapter 90. We know that Route 31 continues to be an issue. It's a town road. I mean, back in 2003, I think, was one of the first times that they talked about trying to do something. It doesn't meet for the tip, because it just is too expensive. In the last couple of years, we were able to get money into the bond bill. It's a five-year bond bill. The governor has not released the funds from that bond bill yet, but there is money sitting there in the bond bill for the reconstruction of that road. So, you know, we'll continue. I know that Donnie's been in conversation, others in conversation, with our congressional delegation and trying to see, and if we can get anywhere, we can, you know, we're not greedy. We'll take the money wherever it wants to come from. On How State Park, as you know, you know, we have something like 29, 30 state parks, 78 state forests, the beaches and everything else that DCR controls. How State Park had, not just that park, but when those parks stopped being manned, when they stopped having full-time folks at those parks, the parks went down, because now people see them as areas where you can party, where you can throw your trash, and it's been an issue. Every time I've complained, then I get somebody out there, and they'll go on, they'd straighten up the fencing around it again, they'd get rid of the graffiti that was painted on the bathrooms, and then next week, same thing is back again. So, we understand that that's a constant issue in trying to put more money. The governor's budget hit DCR very hard. He took a, they took a reduction in the governor's budget. Again, so it'll be a fight to try to make sure that we can get money back in to fund our state parks, because, of course, that all ties in with tourism as well, and so, you know, we want to get people out. I know that some other communities form friends groups and have friends groups that work on their state parks, and I don't know, know that that's come up in the past in Spencer, and I'm not sure where that stands right now, but that's always in some sort of, something to kind of keep in the back of the mind. Tourism, as I mentioned, about the funding, and then you had asked about the state pension reforms and the unfunded liabilities, and that is always the big issue. Massachusetts does put money back into trying to help with that, but I think the rate we're at, we will not be fully funded till 2040, I believe, now, and so, we have about a $30 billion liability in that fund. And basically, it's, you know, we've got a lot of folks that retire. Massachusetts has been pretty decent with benefits for people, for health benefits, other retiree benefits, the life insurance, the prescription drug costs that are part of it, and it's expensive. And so, a big part of that, in addition to putting more money so that we're not keep kicking that can down the road, money from our tobacco settlements, they're supposed to go 100%, are supposed to go into that. That has not been the case, in fact, the governor this year, too, took some money out, did not put all of that into the pension liability fund. So, that continues to be, continues to be a big issue, and that leads the entire healthcare issue as a whole. You know what you face with the increases in healthcare. People at home know what they face with the healthcare going up, and we have the same thing with GIC, with healthcare costs going up and trying to figure out ways for cost containment, and a big part of it is absolutely the pharmaceuticals, there's no question. You know, you saw that horrendous deal with that Skarelli fellow, you know, when a drug that they produced was $13.50 a pill, and he jacked the price up to $750 a pill. $5,000 increase, excuse me, a 5,000% increase. And I'd like to say that that's an unusual circumstance, obviously, you know, he wasn't known as the most hated man in America for no reason, but unfortunately, that happens a lot, and we have very expensive, whether it's HIV drugs, some of the oncology medications, they're extremely, extremely expensive. And so, part of it is the cost containment. You know, the governor would like to see more people get into managed care, health plans rather than what, than having the PCP now. So, you know, that's a, that's a big issue as well. So, in addition to that, we have an election coming up in November, and there's going to be a few things on the ballot in November that, depending on how people vote in Massachusetts, could have a very big effect, including charter schools. I have not, I'm not a charter school proponent, I never have been. I'm not thrilled with what the governor has proposed as part of his charter school plan for his funding. Currently, in Massachusetts right now, you receive 100% funding, the school where the kids are going for, that you get 100% the first year, you get 50% the next year, and then 25% for the next four years. Under the governor's proposal, you get 100% the first year, 50% second year, 25% and then nothing after that.
That's the school where the kid left from, right?
Correct. So, the regional, but, and the only people under the governor's plan that would get, the only schools that would get money back in years two and three, is a few were an underperforming school. So, right now, most of the underperforming schools and school districts, not just one school in the district, but the entire district, it tends to be the urban schools. So, for folks where we are, you wouldn't see a penny. So, there is a bill that both the Senate and the House are looking at, and I expect, I would expect something is going to come out of the Education Committee, where they're hoping that they will be able to come up with a compromise that the folks who are pushing the ballot question will accept, so it doesn't go to the ballot. Because I have to tell you, if it goes to the ballot, that is going, it's going to be a problem, because as you know, in most ballot questions, they tend to be more urban-based. That's where the voting population is, and just like what happened in 1996 with the trapping issue, not a single town around here voted for that. Boston did, and now we've got a trapping law that's caused a bunch of havoc. I won't get into that whole deal, but if this were to happen, the urban communities would vote for the charter schools, and we would live with the consequences. In addition to that, is a bill, a proposal to legalize marijuana, and there have been folks that have gone from the Senate, I believe a delegation is planning to go from the House as well to Colorado, to see how they have been dealing with that and the cost that it is costing that state and things that they had not considered, and if that gets passed in November, we're going to have to come up with something in January. So, a couple of things that could be very big cost drivers are coming up and will be on the ballot. So, I will stop there, and then you can ask these guys all the questions.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're looking at me. No, I think, you know, Senator Goby did a great job. She hit all the points, I think, some of those important things. Obviously, the budget is in the House right now, as the senator mentioned. We're going through our Ways and Means hearings. She gave you the timeline. I think it is important to note that we will be looking to put some additional money in some areas where we can, and Senator Goby is correct, right? The Senate gets that last bite at the apple when we have more clear picture on the revenue numbers, so I think that works out real well. You know, we are pushing for some of those regional school transportation issues for the 80%. I know that's been, that's been a big issue in my discussions with Chairman Dempsey, as well as a number of the other issues that were brought up. I'm happy to answer questions. I know, you know, a big bone of contention here is Route 31. It was on the list. It's a road that I happen to live on, that I happen to replace my front end of my car every four, five years, seems like, that Donnie lives on. And, yeah, you know, we've been working with the, with the federal delegation, with Congressman McGovern, as well as with DOT, trying to get it into some of their plans, whether or not they try to do a portion of it, all of it. We just like to get the ball rolling on it, and whenever the governor's out this way, we try to get him to drive down the road, so, just so that he can, he can have the full experience. You know, and Ann brought up about the ballot questions, and we'll disagree on the charter schools, but the marijuana question is a big issue that's coming up, and, you know, that one's been polling very well lately, and I don't think people do understand the ramifications of it. And it's interesting, because I think, I think being in this position, and I won't speak for them, but I think being in this position, you come to realize that a lot of times, we get these ballot questions that come up, and people are trying to make complex law, and we see ballot questions getting boiled down to a bumper sticker, right? Question two, bad for you, whatever it may be. And really, I think some of these things that are coming up, they shouldn't be on ballot questions. I think we see a lot of it being driven where maybe the legislature will do something if a ballot question pushes them to do it, like right to repair what we saw there. Of course, the right to repair proponents then kind of reneged on the deal that came about and decided to bring it to the ballot anyway. But I think there are some issues that are coming up. I do think the marijuana issue is going to be big, and if the state passes it, we're going to be in some trouble. You have to, you do have to look at what's going on in Colorado, the problems that they're having, the amount of money it's costing, and I think a lot of the arguments there are not really panning out where, you know, a lot of people say, well, you know, it brings the, if you legalize it, you get to tax it. That doesn't stop the drug dealers, because now they have a built-in, they have a built-in reason to sell. You don't have to pay tax on this stuff. So, a lot of these arguments that come up really aren't worth making, and so I think there's going to be a big education thing, effort there that we're going to need to work on. It's something we're all going to need to work on, because as the senator mentioned, it's difficult. We're having a serious problem where four to five people a day are dying from overdoses, and it's a serious, serious problem here in this, in this country and in the state. So, I don't think legalizing marijuana is really going to help us out with that. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions. Ann hit all the highlights, but certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Boy, not much I had to say. See, that's the benefit of going last and behind, many years of experience, because everything gets covered for me. But on the marijuana thing, yeah, there was a delegation from the Senate at our last caucus before we met with the governor. Senator DiMascio had gone and filled us in, and it seemed like when he went, the only people that were for it were the people that actually make money off it. Even some of the agencies that, before they legalized it, might have been for it because of the tax issue and the increased revenue, they have since, you know, gone to the other side. And he said mostly the cost, the money they take in in revenues, was, I think it was about a quarter of what they expected, he said, and the cost to implement this and, you know, with all the new issues it creates, far exceeds any revenue they might have gotten.
Yeah, the nerding cover costs.
Yeah, yeah, so it's actually costing them money, but I read an article a couple days ago where somebody was saying how great it was, and the problem is, and my colleagues know this, that there's a huge amount of money behind this on the other side that, you know, because it's beneficial to anybody interested in it, you know, financially. So, they're very organized, and they have almost unlimited capital to try to push us through, but it seems strange in a time when we sit here and talk about increasing the budget for opiate, you know, fighting drug addiction, and then we're going to make another illegal drug legal. Doesn't make much sense to me, but we'll see. Yeah, as far as the Voke reimbursements, you have a bill, right?
Yes.
And there's a bill. I have a bill and, and did you already have your hearing on this?
No.
Yeah, I did too, so, and they're still sitting committee, you know, until that March 16th date, so we'll see. If they don't get reported out of committee, I would, you know, I know you talked all the towns around to get on board, but the more towns you get on board, the more reps that get that in their ear, the easier it is, so the better chance it is to pass that. So I've learned that in my year down there, so. Yeah, I think the foundation review said it was $2 billion. We were about $2 billion short overall and, and the Speaker had mentioned doing it in steps. I don't know if the Senate President had mentioned that too, but, so hopefully that gets addressed because with all the stuff they want to do, I think, I think it was about $2 billion short, they said, that committee. And we are working on Route 31. I mean, we're all trying and, and we'll take money from wherever now, so federal government, DOT, wherever we can get it, we're still working on it. Actually, I have a question for you. So how can, can control that be given to the town so they could do something with it or no? I know funds is an issue.
We have problems major in our own parks as we have, but I mean, I have thought about that also, you know, four years ago. Could we, could we handle that, that space?
Yes, it is a jewel in town. I grew up there. I mean, every day we were there.
Was it, you know, if I could add a history on that, did we, did we hand that to the state many, many years ago? There's always a state park?
I think there's always.
It's been part of the state for, for.
Forever.
And we think we did talk about that a few years back and, and the state has entered into agreements where they, where the letter friends group or somebody takes care of it, but you don't get to keep the revenue. You still get to pass it.
Well, that's, I mean, if, if, you know, whatever Parks and Rec could take it over and charge whatever it is for season passes or whatever and use that revenue to keep the park up, that would be great, but so you don't get to keep the revenue?
No, when I talk to them.
Well, that's something.
Yeah, there's not too many that they allow revenue retention for and that's not a revenue generator anymore.
Even if you're using it to fix the place, they won't let you keep it?
No. They don't charge anything right now.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's all I got unless you have any questions.
The, the one thing I'd want to mention too, you know, one of the things we talked, to get back to 31, and Tony, you and I talked about it, I think, before we were here tonight. But, you know, a lot of people say, well, you know, it's just, we can get away with $2, $3 million to fix that. It's going to be between two and four, depending on how you do it and things of that nature. I know the original price was up to $11 million if you did, if you wind it and did all those things. One of the problems that we've been having is, is that what we found was going into this administration, while the administration does their capital projects, the previous administration had encumbered a number of projects to be done statewide, a huge number of projects to be done. So what we're seeing right now is that the cap just isn't there to put that money into projects that we may all want. So we're hoping that as those start to kind of flush through the system, that money will shake free a little bit more, a little bit easier anyway.
Always the sore spot. To the board.
Especially if you drive it every day.
Yeah, to the chair.
It's horrible by your house, I want to tell you.
To the chair, you folks live here, you know, we're in a perfect storm here. We've, we've got, we've got lack of Chapter 70 funding for, for roads that are, that are in disrepair. Our infrastructure's crumbling. I'm sorry, Chapter, yeah, Chapter 90.
Well, lacking both of them, right?
I'm going down the list and my, you know, my head's not going with the list. Chapter 90, pardon me. You, you folks got a, had a visit with our schools and that's, that's one problem of a few that we, that we would hope that state funding would, would help us with in a small way. So we're struggling there. So it's been a, it's a perfect storm of all these things happening to, to us at once and we're, we're struggling to, to move forward and the community is very suspect at this point to open up their wallets any, you know, any further to, to fund these initiatives. So all the work that you can do for items like Route 31 and, and being our advocates for anything related to the schools is greatly, greatly appreciated. Also wanted to let you folks know, maybe we could do this with a formal email, just as a reminder, we have an initiative going on now where we're trying to drive economic development in town. We've, we even with all this thing going, with all this going on, we, we've tightened our belts for, for forever and we've tried to get an initiative together with, with citizens, business owners to try to see what we can do to drive economic development. And we're moving towards possibly creating a, a business incubator or eventually a redevelopment authority in town. So I think we should just get the word out to, to our delegations so that you could help or point people to us and to assist us in that effort, that'd be great. I've, I've brought up the pension reforms forever and, and, and it's a, it's a contract we, we have with employees. I understand that. But, but in the future, we're, we're dealing with paying for modern costs and expenses with a, with a model that's been there for decades and decades. It's out of date and I just, it would just be nice to see an effort as painful as it would be and unpopular as it would be to, to revise the model in some way and make it more, more sane. Because, you know, eventually we are a, we're a microcosm of, of the state. We're eventually got to start paying for this on our side as well, some of our liabilities. And we haven't started. I'm sure that's the same with many, many communities and that worries me. It's worried me for, for years. So while I'm here, I'll continue to ask the question about it. But again, I think we are, we're also very fortunate to have a, a delegation of folks who, who live in our town. We're very fortunate as a town to have you folks representing us. So thank you for coming tonight and I'm done.
A few questions, just going to bounce around, just, just starting with the last one, the, the discussion about how state park and when its future is. You, you'll be pleased to know that, that there is, that the Parks and Rec Commission, which I attend regularly, is, it's, it's looking more broadly at recreational opportunities in town. It's not just focused on the parks. I mean, we are trying to get, bring the park services back, but there's also a recognition that, that to, to look at recreational opportunities in town, you need to look at the trails and, you know, the conservation lands. And there's, and then I can, I, I don't think I'm betraying anything, you say that, that there's a, a great willingness on the, on the part of the commission to, to bring in other people. One thing we're, we're going, we're going to do is, is, is to invite people in some of the, to, to talk in general about the, about the trail network, which would include, you know, state lands, conservation lands, private lands. There's really a lot of opportunity out here. And this goes back to what Tony was talking about, you know, what, what we have that can, assets we have that we can drive our local economy. And that's something that we really need to take advantage of and, and promote. And the idea of a, of a, of a friends group, I, I think is probably, is what the future holds for a lot of those facilities. I mean, we know it's not tops in, in the state's priority list and if we want to do something about it, we've, you know, we've really got to look to, you know, to our citizens from, you know, the, the efforts on maintaining the trails and, and supporting groups that, that are, that are engaged in, in, in promoting them, making them, you know, a good solid network. So there is, there's a lot going on. We've got some, it's amazing what you can do with a, a good idea and a lot of, you know, and some, and some, and some energy. I think we're, we're seeing it there and I'm, I'm pleased to, to see those kinds of discussions on, on, on Parks and Rec. So I thought you'd, you know, be pleased to see that. It's, I think what's, what is sad is, is knowing what Spencer State Forest and Park and How Park used to be, it used to mean as a, as an option in the summertime for, for swimming in all, especially when we, we had to close, we haven't had Luther Hill open for, for a couple of years now. So it's, it's one of those things that, you know, could be in, you know, a regional attraction, as, as well as serving locals. So I just want to, want to keep that in, in front of you. The other thing that I, I want to mention, not that you, when you, when you vote for funds like tourism or the discussion on tourism comes up, I know it's very difficult to sort of reach into the, you know, into those agencies and, and, and get involved in how they work and where the money goes. But the reason I brought, I was, it was my point, the reason I brought it up was, and you were there, Ann, and Peter, at the, at the Hanover a few weeks ago when it talked discovering, you know, Discover Central Mass. And I, I followed up with, with Christina. My concern to her was, as exciting as it is to hear about these efforts to, you know, focus on tourist, tourism opportunities in, in, in the Central Mass, unless you're a big player already and have your, you know, your promotional machinery in place like a Stirbridge or like a Southwick Zoo or, or the, or the Worcester Art Museum, it's, it's hard to bring that sort of, the prosperity that can come with it down to the local level. And I, and I called Chris, Christine and talked with her about that, just in terms of the, of the technical support, you know, that we could, that we might be able to get, I mean, how we, we can take advantage of the network. I had breakfast at Charlie's, one of my, you know, favorite attractions, with one of her staff, Caitlin. It was, it was a very pleasant conversation and, and I, you know, I drove that point home with her and it's, again, it gets back to the, you know, the economic development issues that's come up in our discussions about are we really promoting our, our town? There's a lot we could do inside and I think that's one of the things we're engaging right now is sort of lining up our ducks so that when programs like that come to a regional basis, we're not left with, we're not left with, you know, without a way to take advantage of it. And so that's, I think it's, it, the burden, rightfully falls to the towns to some extent, but that, to see those, to see those, those, those funds just, you know, go to another, you know, chamber of commerce and unless it trickles down, you know, to the local, local towns, we really don't feel the benefit of it. And that's why I make sure that when those subjects come up, I, it would appreciate if you'd sort of ask and, ask in terms of what's the, you know, what's the local takeaway for something like this? What's the, the local direct benefit? How are we, how can towns take advantage of that? Because it's one thing to have a, you know, a splashy campaign, but unless you're ready to, you know, grab people and offer them an, an experience, then you're, you're really not going to, you know, see much change as a result of it. So that's just something to keep in mind and, and that's, every time something like that comes up now, I think of what, you know, how can we take advantage of that? What do we need to do on our end? You know, and how close does it, does it come to us when it really starts to, you know, turn into, you know, an active program? Something that I would, I would like to, to mention that, that, and this is not to catch anybody's by surprise or anything, and I think, Ann, you're active with agriculture and environment, correct, in your Senate committee? It's only recently, it's just since we made this list that I've been able to talk a little more with, with local folks, Agricultural Commission about, about, you know, what's happening and, you know, how we can, especially with the Central Mass grown again, getting back to some local opportunities that we have as, as a farming community. I've been made aware of it, and I didn't, no, I didn't think of this before, but there's a lot of interest in, in, in farming again, you know, and in the agricultural schools, you know, a lot of young people are energized by the concept. But unfortunately, it's, I discovered that, you know, fielding one inquiry from, from someone who just recently moved here from the Brookshires who's looking for land, I, I realized that it's, it's not easy to, to obtain that land, whether it's by lease or, you know, given the capital investment, given machinery costs and all. And I didn't know if there was a kind of an equivalent to, to SBA loans for, for, for young farmers. I, you know.
And there is.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of things.
You could talk to that.
Yeah. Want to jump back a couple and I, you know, I'll get to that.
Sure.
I know when you were first mentioning, and I was thinking about, you know, all the gems that we have in this community. And one of them is the Common Ground Land Trust. I mean, you were at the, down at the small.
Yes.
And, you know, there are a lot of things that are, that are happening in this community. And when you talk about things for, for tourism, what brings people to a community is open space. You know, people want to do things in the outside, there's no question, you know? They, they don't come here for Walmart, they come here for the open space. And so that's what we need to capitalize on. And when you think about the good work that's being done down at Camp Marshall, Jeanne Casavan is doing down there, you know, that she's done veterans programs, she's done things for, for disabled and she continues to do a lot of work and with 4H. And so those are all good things. And that does lead in to kind of agritourism too. Because more people are getting involved in agriculture. Central Mass, believe it or not, we are number three, people won't believe this, maybe we're number five now, but we're in the top five of direct farm sales in the nation. Worcester County, Worcester County farms, direct farm sales. It's number five in the entire nation. And, and that's talking about all the, all the small farmers that we have, whether it's, whether it's people raising the bees, whatever they're raising. And it, it's huge. There is, under the Department of Agriculture Resource, DIA, EMDA does have programs for beginning farmers. They also will link people in because there are people that have land. There are, there are farms that have been in existence with the people that are running the farms now, their kids don't want to do it, but they have the farmland and they're waiting for someone else to take it over. So EMDA does have a site where people, if they are interested in farming, that they can do it. And there are, there are a number of, of programs for people to help them with, in their like first three to five years of farming. So there are programs that are available and they're very good programs.
I'll make sure people are aware of that as the subject comes up. I mean, I was, I've learned of one through the New England Small Farm Institute in Belchertown.
Right.
And now it, and that was, that was good to learn.
And, and on, as a segue into that, on March 10th, I believe, I hope I have the right date, it's a Wednesday evening at the Hanover Theater. I'll be moderating a group with Central Mass grown and it will be a panel of area farmers and it's open to the entire public and talking about these kind of issues.
What day is that?
March 10th, Wednesday 10th begins at seven o'clock, seven o'clock. So then it's the 9th. 9th, I'm sorry, March 9th. At the Hanover, no, no, it's, it's in the evening. It'll start about 5:30, 6 o'clock at night at the Hanover Theater. So we're hoping for a good turnout.
Thank you.
On the Chapter 70, the school aid.
Yes.
What are the chances to increase that during your budget session to a more appropriate level, 3.2, 4.8%? And more in line with the rate of inflation? Because right now it's below the rate of inflation.
Yeah, I, I would bet you will see an increase. Typically, the House and Senate both know that with Chapter 70 forming, or Chapter 90, that those are the things that we like to put money, because it has the most direct impact on the communities. And so I would, I will say there'll be an increase.
The House will raise it, the Senate will raise it more, right?
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully, you got to hedge your bet on that one, but.
Yeah, but I, I would think that's a safe bet.
Okay, thank you.
Well, everybody hits on the same stuff. And again, just to, the new formula for Chapter 70, when are they going to discuss that?
There is no new formula and that's, it's going to be something that'll be implemented over probably many years. But there, there is no set new formula as of this time.
I just want to follow up on it and I know through talks with everybody that, and I appreciate you getting hold of McGovern because maybe there is some federal money somewhere hidden out there that we can get. We always talk about being shovel ready on 31 and it's near and dear to our hearts because we have to live there and travel it. Is that a chance that if we are shovel ready and somebody can't get their project, that we got a better shot? I mean, I just want to reconfirm this. We always talk about this, but with the people at home listening and they take a lot of heat over the trees we're cutting down and getting prepared, so.
Well, I, I'd say that the work that's being done, that the towns put money into on the drainage and getting the trees done shows, shows the state good faith that we're doing the work that we can do, we're putting the money into the road that we can put in. And now we're looking for them to pony up. Unlike what happened with the tip money on the, the first section, we were able to get that tip money back eight years ago now, I guess. Because, actually, because somebody didn't happen to show up at a meeting and we were able to kind of steal it from them.
Right.
That was, that was the whole issue. So, but it's not quite the same way. When they put together the capital program, they're going to be looking at projects that are ready to go. So it's not entirely the same, but I do think that showing that we're doing the work there, showing that we're, we're, we're putting in that effort does promote us pretty well.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think the people at home need to hear this, that it's not as easy as just saying, let's do it.
Well, that's, that's the problem is, is, you know, I, I think probably the most emails and phone calls that I got was when they decided that they were going to do Route 49 and do a complete reconstruction basically on Route 49. And yet, a, a lot of people said it didn't need it. But, you know, you're talking about different pots of money, you're talking about different But, you know, you're talking about different pots of money, you're talking about different programs. Route 31 isn't technically a state road, it's not, it's not something the state just is going to pony money up to, so we have to persuade them to do it. So it's not entirely the same thing, but, but yeah, you know, and what I do tell people is, you know, not for nothing, but you have two state reps that live there, you have, you have three selectmen that have to drive it, John's the only one that doesn't have to drive it every day.
He never complains about it, I don't know, I don't know why.
But, but, you know, it is, it's, it's something that we think about constantly and, and, you know, because it's always there, it's there every morning when I wake up. But, but no, we, we really are trying, it's, if it was easy, you know, it would have been done 10 years ago.
They told you, Gary, one of the first caucuses we had with the governor, he relayed to us that, you know, aid would still be available for these projects, but he wanted the towns to have the skin in the game, you know, not to, all of a sudden I need a road done, come and do everything. So I think by Steve and the rest of Highway Department, everybody who's contributed and worked on that road, especially, you know, the drainage and the trees and has done that, has, has made our chances a lot better to get funding quicker, sooner than later.
Yeah, we talk about that all the time, and it's just, you know, it, it just is a hot button because everybody uses the road, not just us that lives here, but some of the stuff, and it's, that we talked about, as far as John and Tony were talking, is economic development and trying to develop and draw new business within, within our community, and how do we develop it? And I think there has to be something, whether it's farming, and I know that's dear to John's heart, he spends a lot of time on it, but, I mean, every time you see a Cumberland Farms close, I just got word that the diner closed as of yesterday. You know, and you watch these buildings close up and it just becomes worse and worse of a scenario, so as they progress and, and they're chatted with the economic development, anything you can do to help them or direct, we definitely would appreciate it. I know this year we've all taken projects and, you know, getting a solar farm on the transfer station, I think will generate some revenue that hopefully we can, can replace some of the stuff we've lost, but with Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 being weak money from the state, it's not new. Those are the biggest pushes that we can ask you to at least generate and try to, and hopefully the budget as it comes, as your groups meet, will push us forward. Just a statement, but hopefully it does come to fruition, so. And it's tough to see these buildings close. I made an investment to open up in town, and it's tough after something being closed for five years to try to regenerate and bring life back to it, so.
What diner?
Echo Berry's.
Oh, Kenwood?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
If I can ask a question too, because I think one of the important things is, is where are we at with the downtown plan? I mean, I know that's, that was on the tip.
Correct.
What's the status on that? Because I think that is a major driver for this town.
So our program year is, is 16, so we're looking to advertise for construction this fall.
Okay.
So we're going through the process of right-of-way, which happens after you get to a 75% design, so we've undertaken that process in coordination with DOT, Steve and myself, so we expect from, you know, probably April to through the summer, we'll be finalizing all that, and then we can, free to advertise, so. So I expect to shovel and.
Yeah, you know, I love that project, I think that's, it's a good project, and it, it helps develop our downtown, it helps give us some aesthetic appearance to it, and I think it's a big project.
Yeah, absolutely.
We agree. Hopefully it brings back some walking traffic, gives us a little parking, and I always laugh because, and I'm not as young as you guys, but, you know, I can remember the AMP being in, in Macklin's building, and you parked down back and everybody walked, and this town was a booming town on Thursday night, payday.
Mr. Chairman, having mentioned that, that project, that was a driver for, for this Economic Development Group getting together.
Yeah.
And sometimes we're disjointed with our projects, at the same time we have a downtown revitalization effort going on, so we're trying to tie these all together and see if we could, you know, get some synergies behind them, I hate using hackneyed phrases, but synergy between the projects to, to move forward. I mean, along with the, there was a perfect storm, another perfect storm, Sudden Block was available, so we were, we had business people all together discussing, discussing that, and it, it became this group that we're dealing with now for, to try to drive economic development. I had forgotten about another question, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry. Years ago, when you, when you were still on the board, I, I thought I heard a rumor that there was an effort to require the school districts to be larger as, as far as the population of students. Have you heard anything like that, dating back to the Deval Patrick administration? I thought that they were trying to, to create larger, these districts not to be larger.
You relayed that to us, was it you guys, Adam?
No, I, I think the, I mean, even with this administration too, there's been more push for regional efforts, and you see that with the community compacts. And, so yeah, there, there hasn't been anything major talking about, you know, making these super duper districts, but there has always been talk about trying to figure out ways to do some economy of scale, and whether it's in the situation where we're cohabing with Dr. Maureen Marshall, where she is a superintendent for two districts. And so there are things that, that happen in some of the areas, sharing financial officers, you know, doing things like that. That is still, is still there, and, you know, that, that's not precluded.
Yeah.
And people investing for those sort of things.
Yeah, I just, it, 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 it concerns me, and it's concerned me for years, just the, the size of our district and how, how it can operate, and it, and how viable is it going, looking out years ahead? It really concerns me. I don't know if we get to that point where, you know, we get those economies of scale in this, in this district. I just, I heard years ago, and, and then, then we just, the, the bottom kind of fell out in the meantime, so I did follow up on those questions, so, thank you.
The board all set?
Thank you very much.
I want to thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it up, keep the pressure.
Thanks.
Yeah, just let me know, and I'll, I'll give you those numbers anyways on the other one.
We take two minutes, Mr. Chairman, we take two minutes.
We're going to take a two-minute recess. Okay, welcome, we're back. Next item, vote, vote to authorize additional snow and ice expenditures in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, Mr. Tyler. Welcome.
So, how are you all this evening?
Living the dream.
Here for a first snow and ice increase for this fiscal year, and it has been a light year, but still have had approximately 20 or so events that we've responded to, a lot of them icing, and icing related, so we still use quite a bit of salt so far this year. As of right now, our expenses are approximately $64,000 in the red, and that was as of the beginning of last week. So what we'd like to ask for on the increase is the increase of our expenses by $100,000, which gives us about $35,000 on top of where we are in the red right now.
And the main reason is for materials, correct?
Yes.
Right.
Materials and private, but mostly materials.
Expenses, part of expenses, so labor is strictly overtime for staff, and then the expenses that comes out of that is materials and also private vendors that do, that Steve has contracts with to do some of the private roads.
Which I knew coming into this tonight, where we kind of were, and my number, it was to move it to $100,000. We've been very lucky that the snowfall total isn't what it is, but every time they go out, it's the same.
Same amount as all.
Doesn't matter.
I forget what we did at the, I mean, obviously last year was.
Well, last year.
We may have added like 300.
Yeah.
25, I can't remember the number was last year, but this is the first request, usually it's come in several times by now, so it has been a light season, however, that doesn't mean that they don't go out when there's, you know, melting and icing, and melting and icing. They've been going out and sanding and using materials, so.
So I don't have an issue with this, but.
We had that about 250 last year.
Okay.
By this time, Steve or?
Total.
No, total.
Probably this time, we're probably.
We're doing 40, 50.
I'm guessing, but we're probably about 50 over where we are right now. It got really bad after right now.
Right. Quiet.
Yeah, these smaller events will kill us too, I think, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's a multitude of.
You go out there, use the materials, and you have a 60-degree weather two days later.
And again, as it melts, it runs on the roads, and we're back in that same boat. We're very fortunate, I think, this year so far.
Fortunate overall, I'm surprised.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, right. So a pleasure of the board, if there's no other questions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the increase of the snow and ice budget by $100,000 into the expense line.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, when I make a letter to the accountant, which I have to do in order to certify this request, is it all going, you want all going to expenses for now?
Yes.
Okay.
Please. Yes.
Okay. I'd ask questions, but I don't want to jinx it, you know, so.
Yeah, I'm with you, believe me.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Evan.
Thank you.
Okay, next action item, place remaining selectmen's and water commissioner's term on the annual election ballot. As everybody may be aware, Selectman Fritz had resigned his position on the board, he also resigned as a water commissioner. So instead of waiting until the May to do it, he's done it now, so that opens it up so that we can not have to spend the money for a special election, so I do appreciate him doing that. However, it is up to us to vote and authorize to put it on the ballot.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about the process. So our terms run three years, so there'll be two, three-year terms up. Will people run, will, for people to take out nominating papers, will, would someone, will they say that I, they want to run for that one-year term, the three-year term?
You have to specify.
You do, okay.
So there'll be two, three years.
Town clerk.
Right, there'll be two, three years and one, one year.
Okay.
Just like when you pull papers, you have to clarify whether it's parking rack or.
Right.
Okay. In this case, you have to, you'll have to declare which.
Correct.
Which.
Which open seat you're.
Okay, all right, that was just a mechanical question. Interesting.
Good question. So we do need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to place the, the selectmen and water commissioner terms on the annual election ballot for vote this year.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Jim, just one more thing before you leave that item, I'd just like to, he's not here tonight, but I'd like to thank Bo Fritz for his work while he was here, that I don't think there's anyone who cares about Spencer more than that gentleman, and all the things that he did for Brendan and I in our office, and I know in conjunction with you folks, wasn't always smooth, but at the end of the day, he always had the interest of the town at its best. So thanks, Bo, you're not here, but definitely liked working with you, and good luck in your future endeavors.
And I have to second that, because it seems like when Bo was around, I may ended up getting pulled away 20 hours, it seems like it's doubled lately, so. He is missed, but again, I wish him nothing but the best, and at some point in time, who knows?
It was, with everything he did, was with the, with the towns, whether it was working with, with the church or with his position here, you always said, you stole my thunder, I was going to say the same thing, no one, no one cared for this town more, more than Bo, so thank you for your, for your efforts. I'd also think, like to thank Bo, and should be acknowledged, that he was extremely generous with his expertise. I mean, it wasn't, I mean, he was, his knowledge base really impressed me with all the mechanical systems and equipment he's, he's familiar with. It was nice to have that, that kind of technical advice here in a lot of the decisions, sort of put it in perspective and gave us a sense of whether or not that was a realistic cost or, you know, what's, what's, I felt a little more comfortable feeling that, felt a little more comfortable that we weren't going to find some, some hidden costs if, you know, Bo had a chance to comment on it, was it really helped, you know, shine a light in all the possible areas of expense.
And totally, I'm glad.
Yes, he would do in his own special way.
As only Bo could.
Okay, old business. Action item, Lake Street School, as you all know, we did schedule a selectmen's meeting to go through that school, which took place on that Saturday. I had the opportunity to take Chris through it because he was working that day. Again, I don't know how much we've spent so far to try to keep that place as warm as we can, I think we've got to make a decision to shut that building down. Requires this board to authorize that. We do have an estimate so far somewhere between 4,000 to 4,600, that is to drain all the water systems throughout and antifreeze the toilets, and hopefully be able to shut that down. That boiler runs at, depending on the, the temperature outside, it averages between 90 and 100 gallons an hour. Unfortunately.
90 and 100 gallons per day.
Oh, per day, yeah. Sorry. Seems like I'm there every hour checking it, make sure it doesn't run out, but, so, I mean, based on the calculations that you can do, even if you put in 2,000 gallons, you're very limited on late the time they'll run, depending on, and again, it depends on the temperature outside. So I think it's a responsibility to us to make a conscious decision to try to protect the asset of the building, but also try to control the cost of it, so.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, any, that amount of money spent is, I think, would be well below what expenditures we'd make keeping that, you know, furnace running. I'll also have to add that, you know, I was pleasantly surprised with the general condition of the, of the building as we, as we went through, and I know there's been prior discussions on how that was a, a sick building. Hopefully, you know, in the near future, through, through efforts of this board, we'll turn that, that building around. But I agree, we've got to shut it down and, and protect it and save costs to the town as well.
I agree. Any other questions?
I have. In light of the burst pipe of the high school with the heaters, missing parts, loud blowers in them, is there a possibility, since we're shutting it down, we're considering it, that we could maybe let them retrofit it?
It doesn't work that way, just so you know, and they do have the same type of heat, based on construction of those buildings, the heat is on at Maple Street School, are the same as what they are at Lake Street, it's the same, same design, they're made, they have squirrel cages that actually spin when the heat's on to try to disperse it. The problem is, is there is no retrofit, and when you talk about the blowers making noise, there is a single motor of about, I think they're a half horsepower motor that operates on belts, that is the only maintenance on that other than bearings on the end, so you'd actually have to strip out the materials, so you're only stripping it out, so you're robbing for Peter to pay Paul, which the life, the life of that building was built in 1956 on the front part, back part was 1976, so you're talking equipment that is multiple years old, that even if you moved it, the life, the lifespan of that product is not going to be worth the, the investment of the time and labor to remove it from one and insert it into another, so where the cost of a motor is probably.
Not even the covers?
Huh?
Not even the covers are missing?
Well, obviously, the covers are somewhere. I mean, they're, they're screwed on, had been, you know.
Just trying to send it all branch out.
No, I understand.
After you've owned this, I have to comment on that same subject, if we just stay on that after we're done.
Yep, which we will.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, to shut down Lake Street and have the administrator to, or search for the, you know, the, for vendor to, to help us shut down that building ASAP.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a question though, Adam, and maybe somebody can answer this, and we'll find it from the fire chief, because my thought process, we're going to shut down, we're going to shut down the water, just want to make sure that, God forbid if there is a fire, I think there is a connection out there, am I right? Do you remember?
I'll have to check with Bob.
So if you could just check with him, other than that, that's my only concern, is to make sure that, and it may be there's a hydrant right there, I don't remember anymore. Trying to think of what was by the kitchen, but, okay, no problem. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll check with Bob as part of the whole process and, and working with Evan and Steve and.
He went through, so I think he's pretty well aware, so.
Just to confirm that what we're doing is, makes the most of it.
Yep, agreed. Okay, thank you for that, guys. Town administrators report.
Well, yeah.
Tony, you want to come in?
I'll go back to that, you're right.
That's, that's regarding the, the high school. Thanks to reading the telegram because I, because I very closely, I learned that our delegation went out and did a, a tour of Proudie. Personally, I don't like to add more meetings onto our docket, but since I operate with the capital planning committee and we're trying to offer that olive branch to our, to our schools potentially, if we can ever meet as far as a process to, to listen to their capital requests, would anyone else have an interest in getting a similar tour from Perry Suter?
Absolutely.
Good point, Tom.
I would like a tour of all schools, not just that one.
I, I think initially it's, Proudie really, really concerns me and I, you know, you get, you get different color from different folks and I'd like to, I like to look at it and I also think that the, the town kind of expects us to be a little more involved.
I think we should involve probably Eastbrook Field too in that.
Yep. I, I just, just wanted to see if anyone else had an interest in doing that, so if, if, if the administrator could, if everyone's okay with it, Mr. Chairman, set up a meeting maybe on Saturday?
I think what we do is, let's have Adam reach out to their chair.
I've got, I've got, yeah, I will, I will reach out to Eastbrook Field and see if they have any interest at the same time.
And then see if we can put that together.
Seeing if that we could have a tour of both Knox and David Proudie jointly and then maybe separately do a Wire Village tour.
I will say that, you know, I'm very happy to see that the gutters got replaced back on, on Knox, that's been done this week they had off, so. You know, I know they were waiting, because I chased that, they were waiting for insurance money and it finally came through, so.
I saw that in the meeting, that they were, they had gotten that money.
So, that's, that's a good sign, but I think you're right, Mr. Pepe, I think that that's the right way to go, so I'm in agreement.
Thank you.
Going back to Lake Street, if whatever committee decides on putting it up for bid, I was wondering if maybe we could split that front land off separate from the building, maybe keep it as a community park or going back to the garden, the community garden, something like that, we can look into that.
I think what we'll, I think, so just update on Lake Street, so, and there's a building reuse committee, so we've advertised in the paper for members, we've had a couple come in, so we're getting ready to get that committee going, in the meantime, working with Steve and the money that was set aside at last fall town meeting, have the architect go in there and put together the building needs analysis, so we're, that's underway. So I think when you go through, the next step would be then be probably the committee to undertake like a highest and best use analysis that they could put into an RFP, or they could just, blanketly just put out the RFP and get whatever bid you can, and you can do two things, you can put out the bid with restrictions, like we did with Suggan Block, maintaining historical character or other types of things, or, and so you have that opportunity when you do an RFP to, to craft it however you would like, but just something to keep in mind, it may be more valuable or, or may be more marketable if the land is included or some portion thereof, so that's something I think that the committee should discuss and maybe the, you know, when, when that committee's up and going, either you attend a meeting or, or through me, bring that information to them, that when they do, go to advertise, they could either do A, just the buildings, B, buildings and all the land or B and some of the land, that's something that they, you know, should, or maybe all three options are put in the RFP and it's up to the, the market's gonna dictate what goes there, not us, so it'd be interesting to see what happens, but I think you don't wanna limit yourself either in terms of the flexibility that you have, although that does make a good use, although we do have other parks and towns that we're unable to maintain, so.
Just a lot of the community uses.
And open spa, open space and.
Uses that for picnics and stuff in the area in the summer, so.
I agree with all that, I'll make this comment that I've made several times before, I, my hope is this committee is proactive and we're not just a RFP creating group, that we've gotta reach out and chase that market, gauge that market, reach out and into that market and see, you know, let, be proactive and let certain segments of, certain business segments or education segments or health segments know that this building is available and that we just don't get into the same old create RFP, throw it out there and, and see what, see what hits the wall, so.
I agree 100% with you, Mr. Pepe, because I think that our goal is to market.
Excellent.
To a wide range of people that might have a use for that, so. And hopefully, I'm hoping somewhere within the next few weeks, we get that first meeting under our belt to, to try to set guidelines and directions, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Now to Mr. Administrator.
Okay, several things I'd like to do tonight, one is give a preliminary budget presentation, introduction to that, and then as part of that, have you guys vote to open annual town meeting warrant, allow for articles to come into petition and also to start drafting a warrant, have those discussions over the next couple of months, and then I also have the initial capital committee request list, that committee will begin meeting next Tuesday, we'll have staff presentations on all of the items, so you're all welcome to join that if you will, I know Tony, myself and Stephen and Evan who are just here will be there. So for 5:30 PM on Tuesday, March 1st, we're gonna run through all 27 of those items for the capital committee to review as part of the process for getting appropriations for capital items, all right?
Is that still on, given the selection day?
It is, we're actually meeting at the library that night.
Oh, okay.
So from a coordination standpoint, it's not ideal to have meetings in this building, so we've, we've moved that meeting to the library in the basement there, where we've had meetings before, and that will allow us to maintain our schedule, we've got a very busy couple of months ahead of us. Hence, we originally had three or four meetings set up, but just on, you know, quorum issues and trying to get everything done in the time that needs to be done, we're gonna move forward with a meeting that night. Okay? So that, on to the FY 2017 budget, so I've got several sheets in your packet, I'm pretty much gonna focus just on my five or six-page memo, five-page memo, and then there's the calendar, which hasn't changed since February 11th, and then the last several sheets is the pro forma, and that is, you know, the memo, memorandum that I put to you, the cover letter will refer to those items, okay? So, as I typically do, we were gonna start with our revenue structure, I'm gonna go through what our revenues are from last year, what changes there are, and then how that affects our overall budget scheme, I'll get into expenses at the general government level and also any changes we've had to make, staff has completed their process in submitting their request to myself, and then based on my revenues, I've had to make unfortunately some serious reductions this year as we move forward, I do have a preliminary budget from Bay Path and only at this time have minimum local contribution numbers from, from Spencer Eastbrook Field, and that is actually coming off of the Massachusetts Department of Education website, so I yet to have an official budget from them, but we know with the governor's budget what the minimum local contribution increase is going to be, and which again, as it has been the last couple of years, is taking up the majority of our new, new revenue. So as you heard from our legislative delegation, the things that they're getting impacted by, and I think you saw their pie chart, the largest thing that they have to pay for being salaries, benefits and health and human services, we're no different in that we have astronomical cost increases relative to both our health insurance and our pension liability, those, those two things combined pretty much would eat up all of our revenue, along with the increase from minimum local contribution means that we're going into the budget year already making $700,000 in cuts before we received a full budget from Spencer Eastbrook Field, so the outlook is not positive. We've done a lot of good things here in town, we've regionalized positions, we've saved money in a lot of different ways, privatized where we could, and our employees have stepped up, as you know, over the last several years in, in, you know, polling all of our neighboring communities and all the town leaders I know, I don't know any other town that has everybody at a 60 to 40% contribution rate, most people are still at 75, 25, so our employees certainly have done their share, but state revenue is not where it was going back to before 2008, our local receipts is not the same where it was going back to 2008. However, the costs of insurance and pension have gone up multiple percentages, double-digit percentages, so you're, that's, that's the common problem you have, you have astronomical cost increases and required benefits and then you have less revenue than you did seven years ago, so that all adds up to reductions in services, reduction in staff levels and so on. So with that, I'm gonna start on the first page of my cover letter, the FY 2017 tax levy limit is expected to increase by $384,000. So as we know, we have three main sources of revenue on the general government side, that is property taxes, state aid and local receipts, local receipts is permits, fines, excise tax, investments, et cetera. So the, the one item that we pretty much can guarantee is the increase in our tax levy, that is because we're restricted by statute, Proposition 2 and 1/2 requires that, or restricts us from increasing the tax levy any more than we did last year by more than 2 and 1/2%, that number being the 306,000, then the $90,000, which is probably a five-year average of new growth, new growth is any new taxes that came onto the tax rolls in the year that we're in right now, that construction, those taxes will be added into after July 1st, DOR allows us to then increase the levy by that approved amount. We have slight changes in debt exclusion and tax rate rounding, which all leads to a 384,000 increase in tax levy. Topic page two, as you heard from Senator Goldie earlier this evening, the House on the Governor's Budget proposes a 4.3% increase in unrestricted general government aid, that equates to $89,000 in additional revenue for the town of Spencer. And his current budget level funds all other items such as out-of-district vocational tuition reimbursement, veterans' benefits, pilots for state-owned land, for example, so that's a payment in lieu of tax, so for example, how State Park or State Forest lands is here in Spencer, they don't pay taxes, they will pay pilots for that, and then other receipts are all level funded. As far as local estimated receipts, that's all, again, that's our third source of revenue, that is mainly excise tax, but then other miscellaneous items like fees, fines, permits, investment, miscellaneous revenue, et cetera. The only increase I have accounted for is a $10,000 increase based on our change to the building permit rate fees that you guys approved earlier this year. Okay? Any available fund transfers, what usually happened at the time of town meeting, that includes transfers of free cash, which we don't like to do, unfortunately, this past fall, we did use $31,000 in free cash, if you recall, for one-time changes to the police department, we had additional money, we had officers retiring, we had overlap, overtime obviously kicking in when you have a lower amount of officers, we had promotional processes, hiring processes, all that type of stuff, we said that was a one-time thing, so we used free cash in the fall. That revenue source, so if we look at all of our revenues, say 25 million in revenues last year FY 16, you know, there's now $31,000 less because we're not gonna use that free cash yet, right? So I'm taking that off the top. In addition, the last several years, we've been using overlay surplus. Overlay surplus is the result of any money that is not spent from your abatement reserve, so if you recall, on the second page of my pro forma, at the very bottom, we reserve about 100 to 110,000 in abatements, okay? So you know what your approved levy is, let's say it's 13 million, if anyone applies for abatement on their taxes, let's say they awarded a $5,000 reduction in their taxes, let's say, such that we don't reduce our known income of 13 million, we keep a reserve that we would take that 5,000 out of, and that's our abatement reserve. So at the end of, any, every year, whatever's not taken out or whatever's not, whatever's left in that account for abatement reserve, then becomes surplus the following year, okay? We've used that the past several years to balance our budget because of the loss of revenues that we've had, so going back several years, we had about $400,000 in built-up revenue over almost a decade worth of surplus, and we use that rather than making, say 100,000 in reductions every year, to pay for things like the senior work program, our tax title expenses, so that money is all dried up, and that is gonna be a killer for us this year, there's no longer that surplus of that 99,000 that we used last year to apply to the budget. So based on those two things alone, along with a reduction in indirect cost reimbursement, indirects are the amount of money that the Water and Sewer Enterprise funds reimburse us as a general government, they reimburse us for things that we pay for them upfront like health insurance and accounting costs, so as our budget decreases, they essentially pay a percentage, they pay a percentage to us, they pay for IT, they pay for insurance, they pay for us handling accounting and tax collections, we collect all their bills for them, so as our costs have been cut over the last couple of years, their reimbursement then is obviously gonna be.
Less.
So that being said, the available fund transfers, if you look at the bottom of page two, we have about $141,000, it's gotta be deducted because that money's not there this year, that was a revenue source last year. So we do have $484,000 in new revenue, that's the new levy increase of 384, that was my opening paragraph, the $89,000 was represents 4.3% from the governor, and then the $10,000 for the local receipts increase is a total of $484,000 of new revenue, less revenue that's no longer there this year, minus 141, leaves you with $343,000 in new revenue this year. Okay? Does anyone have any questions in terms of revenue?
So that's, just to be clear, that's the new, that's the new money, additional money we have to work with over the last.
All right, so let's, let's just say we had $20 million coming in last year, now we have 20 million, 343.
Okay.
And revenue, okay? Just to round things and keep things in perspective. All right? So now to page three. So now we're gonna move to the expense side, so we start the process at the end of November after Thanksgiving, all the department heads get a budget package based on the goals that you have set, based on directions from myself, we've looked at seven-year history of items, we look at each line item, each expense in each department's budget, they have an opportunity to, over the month of December, to go through that, get quotes, look at their utility usage, we incorporate any contract agreements, whether it's an increase in any vendor contracts going into 2017, whether it's employment contracts, someone, you know, obtaining a longevity bonus, that, all, all that type of stuff needs to get incorporated into our expense budget. So the department heads submit that to me in early January along with their capital requests, and then I put together my revenue structure, and then I also factor in the education increase, the minimum local contribution increases, I've got some preliminary numbers for our health insurance, for our pension, those numbers have come out, and based on all of that, I then had to pare down our government budget, you know, because our revenues are essentially fixed, we know our fringe benefits costs are gonna be fixed, we know we're gonna get an assessment from the school district, the only thing I can change when there's a deficit is gonna be the general government budget, I can't add more revenue, I can't change the school assessments, the only thing I can do with, if there's a deficit, is deduct town staff, so I've done that. So originally, this budget was about $300,000 higher than it is now, I think the number's 284, which meant 314,000 increase in an 8.7 million budget, which isn't that very much, it's less than 3%, but what I've had to do is by reducing that 284, we're down to only a $30,000 increase or 0.3 point, 0.35% increase in the general government budget, which includes public safety, highway, social services, health, health and human services, culture and recreation, debt service, benefits, et cetera. So our, our last year's budget was 8.7 million, 16,000, this year it's 8.7 million, 46,000, very, very small, about the smallest we've had since I've been here. Okay, so this budget has to factor in the 2% increase, this is the third year of our contract for the collective bargaining, which was a modest 2% each year for the last three years, and 8% increase for Worcester County Regional Retirement, which is, that is known. Our health insurance, I received prior to this letter that our increase would be anywhere from 4% to 12%, I found out, so I budgeted 8% right in the middle, I found out today as I got back from vacation that it's gonna be 12.8%. So I'm gonna have to go, that's, we're about, each percent represents about $5,000, so our increase alone in health insurance, 13% is about $65,000, so we're gonna have to further pare down this budget. So keeping in mind at the top of page four, the budget doesn't, therefore does not restore, because I've had to pare down, does not restore any of the reductions that we made several years ago, two years ago from FY 15 when we made $500,000 in cuts. So in order to balance the budget based on our known revenues, our known assessments from education, our known fringe benefit increases, I had to reduce our town budget by 288,000. So you can look at the line items, these are all the line items, eliminating everything from $1,000. from $1,000 in utensils, I mean utensils, $1,000 in expenses such as pens and papers and those types of things, printing expenses, to taking the cruiser out, which we worked so hard to get back in. So I needed $40,000, obviously somehow to get to 288. That $40,000 is now coming out of the operating budget, which we fought hard to get in there. And now it's gonna go onto the capital plan list, all right? Now it's gonna compete for that at any available free cash. In addition to dam repairs, so in the highway department, they have money for stormwater management and for dam repairs. We're gonna have to take the dam repairs out, leave money in there for minor maintenance and for any soft costs like engineering. But any actual expenses that have to go into repairs, same thing with stormwater management, is gonna have to come out of the capital plan. And that's been in, and we put that back in the budget, if you recall. We had that discussion back in 2000, actually it was 2014 for the FY 15 budget, what things we were gonna reduce. Those things that were in there now have to come out. And then, so all those reductions, I'm not gonna go through them individually unless you have a question on any of them, but everything from $300, such as utility costs for Pleasantwood School, which we had in there, to reducing, you know, all types of reserves that we've had. Such as I factored an increase in our general insurance of 10%, and reduced that to 5%. I will not know those numbers until after town meeting, and then we may have to make an adjustment on those in the fall. But we've been anywhere from 5% to 10% increase on those. Eliminating an unfilled position at the transfer station, decreasing the modest increase I have in snow and ice. As you know, snow and ice, we historically fund less than we spend, and therefore we balance that with free cash in the spring. And rather than use that money to buy capital equipment, we use that money to apply. You saw $100,000 tonight. $100,000 out of our free cash is gonna come out tonight and go towards snow and ice come spring. So we're trying to gradually increase that every year. Been on the finance committee, Mary's doing that every year, trying to add 10, 20,000, get those numbers up. We're barely keeping up with inflation. We're not making any headway. I had originally, in my original budget, had $20,000 increase, and I took $10,000 out of there. Further reducing town council numbers, again, printing expenses, new rules letter expenses, minor stuff. Okay? And one of the reasons I've had to do that was because I know we're gonna have a minimum local increase in our contribution for education. Not saying they don't deserve it, just it is what it is. So that minimum local increase between Spencer East Brookfield and Bay Path is $351,000. So if you look back to my net revenue on page two, it was 343. So the minimum local contribution money going out to education is $8,000 more than we have in money coming in this year, and they haven't even given me a budget yet, right? So therefore, I then have the increases in our health insurance, our pension, and anything else in our budget. That's why I had to cut $288,000, okay? I can only take it out of one place. I can't take it out of the fixed costs, right? Or assessments. So in summary, on bottom of page five, again, $343,000 in new revenue. Told you how I added those up. The additional expenses, the 349, there's a slight adjustment for out-of-district voc, the 350, it was actually, we have one less student, so there'll be a $2,000 decrease. That's the difference between the 351 and the 349. The difference between the additional revenues and the additional expenses is 6,800. I balanced that out by just adjusting the abatement. And I had to cut the 288 out of our town budget in order to balance the budget. So, and you know where this is all heading. It's not gonna be a surprise. It's been the way it has been in years past. If we have, you know, significant increases in additional local contribution requests, our transportation costs from Spencer East Brookfield, you know, only two choices. One is to further cut your town budget or BS for additional levy. Same old story as the last few years. Questions? So I'll update you weekly or every meeting that we have, based on any numbers that we, you know, some of these numbers are preliminary. And then as we move further through the process, I get a lot of more knowns. And as I make those changes, I'll inform you of those. My finance committee tomorrow night, have the same discussion. Preliminary budget for FY 2017.
A question for the administrator. So you just got the news on the actual increase in health insurance, right? That was from eight to 12. You have to go from eight to 12. And now, so general insurance, that is still out there, waiting to hear on that?
So if you look at page three, bottom of page three, employee benefits. And actually, that's a great chart to look at. You can see that half the charts have reductions, and the other half have slight increases. The increases at the bottom, item 800, item 900, employee benefits and general insurance, those are fixed costs. So our employee benefits are gonna go up $97,000, almost 100 grand, okay? That's almost 6%. I know today that as part of one line item within that employee benefit package, because there's other things in there like workers' comp, you know, there's other things in there. We pay a benefits vendor to coordinate all our benefits. So today I found out, again, we want to go, our increases are gonna be 8% in health insurance. It's gonna be 12.8%. So that number is, right now I know is gonna go from 97 to 122. And then, so I'm gonna have to go back into the general budget and continue to cut in order to balance the budget. You could see other things that are reductions, such as our general government was a $54,000 decrease. We had a decrease in public safety, decrease in public works, a slight decrease in debt service. And you can see the increases are quite modest. $12,000 in public health and human services, culture and recreation of $13,000. So the majority that you can see is gonna be in the benefits. And those are fixed.
But back to the insurances, so that, that could go, that could be 10%?
Correct.
Okay.
Which would be another $10,000. So those numbers don't come out till really, really late. Usually have to town meeting.
Oh.
So I'm, you know, trying to budget a number that's, I can live with, you know, that if it came in that high, I'd only have a slight reduction in the, I'd have a slight addition in the fall. Or I could go in, I could make that 10%, and I could cut $10,000 from the budget somewhere else. But again, when you're, we're cutting, cutting expenses in department budget equals to less service. It also decreases any ability to have any free cash next year. So you are taking care, each year you're eliminating fluff. So if you think about the $300,000, not that it's fluff, let's say we spent 200, need only 200 of that 300, that's 100,000 that could lead to buying a dump truck next year. That money's not gonna be there next year. So that's, one concern I have is that we've, and I said this at the town meeting in the fall, when someone asked about our free cash levels, I explained to them that we were right at where we needed to be, which was 5% of our total budget, as recommended by Department of Revenue, and that equals where we were in 2007. So we went from a million dollars down to 200,000 in like 2012. And then we've come back up to a million, where we're supposed to be. So every further reduction that I have, I cringe because I know that that free cash is gonna go back down. And we're only gonna go on another trend back down to 200,000. And if you saw, we spent $100,000 tonight in snow and ice alone. So if you have a storm like you had last year, 250, and you had only $200,000 in free cash, you can't do it. You can't pay any bills. You have to cut. So all these variables working against each other, trying to keep.
And one more question, on projecting the local receipt increases.
Yep.
That 10,000, is that, does that include our inspectional services?
That is, that is exactly what that is.
Okay. And is that based on?
I could change, I mean, I could, it's, again, it's an estimate. So you're, you know, that's one, like, we know what our increase. You know what your levy's gonna be. It's fixed by Proposition two and a half. You know what your local aid is gonna be if everything holds. Local receipts, you don't know. I could change it to 15,000, but I'm not gonna make up 288,000 by playing around with that number. You know what I mean? So I'd ra, you know, I'm gonna keep that number. I mean, I could go up two or three grand. The gap is so much that that's not gonna make a difference in the big scheme of things. The other thing is, just like I did with the local meals tax, I don't like to budget, and it's just my style, and I think it's worked out so far. And that you guys have agreed that we should do that, that we won't budget something, we're gonna be as conservative as possible until we know what that is amount. So I think DOR had projected we could be about $120,000 in our meals tax. And we said, you know, we're gonna budget 100, right? First year, it came in at 91.
Right.
Right? So we were off, you know, if we went to 120, we would've been off 29,000. We were only off 9,000. So we were able to make that up with surpluses elsewhere. But let's go through a full year, right? And see what those rates do, and then go from there.
I guess one thing I'm getting to is that additional, it would appear with the list of cuts, that the additional receipts we gain in inspectional service fees is not buying us more time for our.
It is buying, it's buying us, I think it was four and a half hours a week.
Okay.
We're at 19 and a half now. That four and a half hours a week is what this will go towards.
Okay.
So if you look on page three. Look at line item 300. So you see an increase of 17,000.
Okay.
That primarily is gonna be a 2% increase for everybody else, right? And then the 10,000, that represents the increase in fees.
Okay, so that's where inspectional services are, okay.
So keep in mind, if I look at public safety, it went down 0.6% and down 16,000. I have over a million dollar payroll in police, so it went up 2%. So I went back in their budget and cut $40,000 from the cruiser, you know, so much for expenses. So all those things working together, yeah.
Through the chair, where are we going as far as trending with the transfer station?
I think we were $13,000 in the black.
Okay.
So I think we're feeling good. We did have less revenue than we thought.
Yep.
But I think, we had a reduction. We had a reduction, and one is we didn't spend the money on the compost grinding again, which I eliminated from the budget this year. And we also had a mid, do you remember we had a mid-year savings when we negotiated a new contract with Wheel Ebrider?
Yep.
So that added to additional revenue. So, which was, you know, that's not gonna happen every year, right?
Right.
So I think we're comfortable where we're near level. I think we have 13,000 again. 5,000 was from not spending the money on the compost grinding. And then the other eight or so came from, we, I think our fees went from $74 per ton to $67 per ton or something like that. So where we need to be.
That's right. We did so much at once, and now it's.
My fear was we have an unpleasant surprise as far as how we're running.
So if you recall, Steve had made a request for one additional monitor position to basically fill. So we have, I think, four part-time, but we have, obviously people are entitled to sick time, vacation time. So what happens, Steve, what he would like to do is when someone can't fill a shift, he wanted to, he'd create, you know, a kind of a floater position that would fill in those times. And then when that times weren't needed, have that person do maybe projects around. We've not filled that position. Unfortunately, the way it happens now is if one of those monitors does not show because of vacation or sick, a highway worker has to go down. So those are, that's one of the struggles we have. However, as we, you know, employ another person, you have a lot of other things that go with it. So that's one of the give and takes that we've had this year and discussed. We have not filled that position, and so therefore I'm gonna eliminate that position next year. And it's an easy one to make. When you eliminate a position that's unfilled, you're not hurting anybody, right? You're not, you know, you're not laying someone off, paying unemployment costs, all those other things. So that's, that's an easy decision to make. However, there's a consequence to that, and that the highway guys have to be pulled from their job. And we have eight of them now, and last year we had nine. And now they're gonna go do something else that's not, you know, well, that means a catch basin isn't gonna get cleaned. That means a tree is not gonna get removed out of the road until the next day, you know, those types of things. There's always a consequence to every action, I guess. So with that, I'd like to, an action item, I appreciate the board voting. Open the annual town meeting warrant.
Does the chair make a motion, open the annual town meeting warrant?
Your motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Let the fun begin. Okay. Board liaison reports. Anybody have anything?
One thing, just the capital. Just see if anyone had any questions. Again, the invitation is open if you'd like to join the Capitol Committee meeting. If not, certainly we'll keep you informed, and you have a liaison. You have, Selma Pepe is appointed a member of that committee and has voting authority on that committee. And they make advisory motions to the town administrator. And in accordance with the bylaw, that any item over $10,000 or has a lifespan of five years or more will get recommendation or ranking from the Capitol Committee. So they're gonna hear presentations from staff next Tuesday. And then they'll come back and they'll rank those items, I think at the end of March. It's on the calendar there, which I don't know, in front of me. I think it's March 29th, something like that. And then I'll utilize that information to then put together a spending plan based on available free cash that we have now, less money that is gonna be going to snow and ice, less any money that's going to any unforeseen expenses in the FY 16 budget. Whatever's left will use towards capital or the course Selma and so choose to put in reserves in other areas, depending on what happens with some of our liabilities that we have or assessments. We may be looking at different strategies with our spending. But as you can see, we have about $1.4 million in requests. And I do believe we have about $650,000 in free cash right now. So minus the 100 here, puts us at about 550. So you already know you're gonna, there's a million dollars of things that are gonna be on the Capitol Plan next year.
So again, that's March 1st, and then the recommendations are what, on the 8th?
Yes, March 8th, Capitol Planning Committee ranking and the recommendations. So all the presentations will be on March 1st, and then there's a week for them to prepare all their forms, get them to me. We meet on March 8th, and that gives me 30 days or so to put together a budget plan for you folks. As we move towards April and beyond winter season, we'll know how much we have after balancing snow and ice. I also gave you, just because it's something Tony and I worked on, and John as well, we were on the FMPC, that I update every year, is the 10-year capital plan. So you can see items in yellow in the middle there, or yours is shaded. FY 2017. Maybe not as shaded as yours, but, so that's this year, correct? So you can see in the previous four years, you can see whether something was approved and we purchased. You can also see if it's been requested, every year for the last four years, it's being requested again. Which happens in some cases, like the salt storage shed bidding, the salt storage shed building. And then you can see future years, what we have lined up for big expenses such as fire engines and so on. So we kinda have an idea of where we're going and where we've been. So if you have any questions on those, feel free to reach out.
Yeah, I just have to make a comment. I spoke to the administrator. Because of meetings that I've been in for the last few weeks, I'm going to try, we've had, the scoring system we've used for capital has been there, I don't know how many years it's been in place. Forever?
Before I go.
Okay. And I think it's inadequate, and it doesn't help us really prioritize these requests.
I think what you're talking about is, we have certain scoring items such as public safety, such as, you know, whether or not it results in savings and operating expenses and things like that. But we're gonna take a look at some of the criteria that we have and the point system that we have, and whether it makes sense to change those. You know, public safety is public safety, but.
Yeah.
They may be up to to look at.
Yeah, we were looking at areas that we've discussed the last few weeks. I mean, does this capital request affect core services? Don't have that in there. Is it a quality, is it a quality of life issue? No, I think, I think some of these things get out of, because of the restrictive scoring system, some items that on the surface just don't seem to be equitable, are scoring very close. And I think there's gonna be some common sense requirements tied to these requests and a better scoring system. So we'll, I'll try to get that.
So Tony, make some recommendations to me, and I'll bring it up to the Capitol Committee.
Great.
That's all I have.
There's nothing else on that. Board liaison report. Anybody got anything?
Well, we had another economic development meeting, another very good meeting. I've been very pleased with the amount of work we've done in the few weeks. We're gonna get right back at it next week, I believe, or this weekend. I'm not sure what the other schedule from Mike.
Next week.
I think we're moving towards a major deliverable on this committee is creating, like I mentioned to our delegation, a business incubator-type group or business mentoring-type group, where similar to what we do for our tech meetings for. where similar to what we do for our tech meetings, for events that occur in town, where someone wants to utilize, once they're at an event, they come to this group where we have our public safety, facilities, facilities people, you know, requirements for fees and so forth. We want to do something similar for economic development. We want to be a known entity, that if someone's interested in opening a business or moving a business to Spencer, that we are a group that they can come to, and we will
Take them through the
Take them through the process of what they need to do to establish their business, some of the stuff they have to do with the town, and also, you know, financing options and pitfalls to avoid. So that's what
Good idea.
And then eventually, with an eye to this group becoming
Change.
A redevelopment authority, with actually some political power behind it. But we're away, ways away from that. But so far, we've had those discussions, it's been very positive, and I think we're going to, this committee's moving quicker than any other committee I've ever worked with, so it's been, it's been very good so far.
Nice.
I would just add, I wasn't there, but I spoke with Mike, and I'll let Tony elaborate on this, but along with, with that group that would receive requests and hear what people would like to do in town, is also having a command of the numbers that tell square footage and locations and parking, some of the stuff that we, you know, we know is out, it's out there, but not in a, not in a form that we can readily reach for and say, this, these are the options, this is where you could go, this is what we've got available. I think that's all part of
Right.
How we receive and deal with inquiries
Right.
Into business opportunities.
Have a process for the process.
Yeah. There's also other opportunities where low-hanging fruit, where this group may be able to help, you know, do things like unify or improve some town structures in town in the short term. But I think the overriding goal is to get that incubator slash mentoring structure set up.
Thanks.
I spoke to the administrator on the FMPC, I'm going to request that in as soon as possible, this group reconvene. Along with the roads project, I'd like to see this group devise a way to, a process to allocate free cash for the town, which would include priorities for free cash, which we always have every year, and then also triggers to put free cash in certain areas where it's needed. If we're above a certain percentage, then 10% goes towards
Open.
Yeah, sickly buyback, whatever, whatever. In addition to, I've sat on this capital committee for several years, and the frustration there is that, and you've got to give his managers credit, they come every year with these requests. I think that we should have a process where, even if we don't fund projects 100%, we should allocate something out of, if we have it available, towards these departments' capital projects, as far as a, as a bank that it could
Building fund, accumulating fund.
Yeah, accumulating fund, where they could tap into, and then, I mean, a 500,000 request in three years becomes a $350,000 request if we can, if we can set up this process.
And I think that's been talked about forever.
Yep.
I think it's a stat.
And we had talked about this with the FMPC years ago, set up this, that kind of calculation, but
And then our free cash went to 200,000, and you said, okay.
That's right. So 50 cents goes to this department, and
Again, forward thinking.
So we'll be looking to do that soon.
Citizens input. Anybody? Not tonight, huh? Board member and staff comments. Ready to be pretty complete.
Yeah.
You okay?
I'm okay. Yes, it's
Then we're going to go to the next one.
Yes. Since we haven't met in a while, we had a prominent citizen pass away, Dave Dergan, who put his heart and soul into this town, into many organizations in this town. And so it's sad to lose a valued citizen of the town of Spencer. So our, it was a few weeks ago, but our hearts still go out to his, his family and his loved ones, and he will be sorely missed in town.
Very good point.
Rest in peace.
We also had a former employee, Marie Vandale.
I was just going to say
Marie worked in the treasure and collector's office, was here when I first started, and she retired about a year or two ago, and was, came suddenly ill a couple of weeks back. So she certainly will be missed, she's part of our workforce community, and certainly a part of the community here in Spencer, and the Vandale family's been in Spencer for a long time, so same thing, hearts go out to Marie's family.
Rest in peace.
We do have a request for executive session, under Mass General Laws, Chapter 38.
Yep.
Twenty-one, Chapter 6, or Line 6?
Paragraph 6.
Paragraph 6. Paragraph 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, and lease or value of real estate.
Motion. Since you read that out for me, then choose the chair, but thank you. Motion.
Motion. Second. All those in favor?
A roll call vote?
Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will return, just to adjourn.
So our next meeting, I just want to mention that our next meeting is Monday, the 29th. It's a special date, it's a week from tonight. We don't usually meet on the 4th Monday, or is that the 5th Monday? It's the 5th Monday. We don't usually meet on the 5th Monday, but we moved our workshop from the last week to that date, and we're going to do that, so we can hold our second presentation on the roads project, Comprehensive Roads Project. So myself, Steve Tyler, the superintendent, and then Bill Scarpotti from FSD will be back, and do probably some repeat of what I did at the last meeting, for those that missed it, and just to keep people on pace with what we're doing. And then, as also as part of that, we'll be providing some additional information, which is three different scenarios versus the original one that we provided at the last meeting, and try to get some additional feedback on that. So 6:00 PM, Monday, March 29th, Presentation Number 2, Comprehensive Roads Project. Yes, we are considering asking for additional tax levy, due to the fact that our funding gap is so huge, and as you heard from our legislators tonight, Chapter 90 is not anywhere near it should be.
Could you maybe explain tonight about the difference in the override, if possible? Because there's some misinformation that was put out in the new leader?
I did see some misinformation that was put out in the new leader. Yeah, I did see that. So, so there are three different types of overrides. One is a general override, and the general override, which I think the article had mentioned, which is not what we're planning on doing, but a general override, for example, with the ambulance that was, received a positive vote several years ago, with a general override, state law says you only have to spend that money on that particular item in the question that first year, and then after that, the money is just tied wherever it is into the general fund, and wherever expenses go, they go. A second type of override is actually called a debt exclusion, and that is for specific capital items or purchases, and the word debt, you should pay attention to with that second type, because it only is an override as long as the debt for whatever purchase is expired.
Right.
Those are two types of overrides that we can increase the levy. The third type of override, which is what we're considering strongly, is known as a capital stabilization, right? It's a stabilization override in which the vote after the first year has to stick with that particular item, so you cannot change it to something else. So we have a Comprehensive Roads Project, and we awarded an override for whatever dollar amount, say X dollars, and we spend it on year one on Comprehensive Roads Project. In year two, we can't take that money and then spend it on the police department, or the library, or give it to the schools, or whatever. That money, in perpetuity, will have to be spent on the Comprehensive Roads Project. And that's why we're asking for that particular structure, such that people know in advance that money is going to, into roads in perpetuity. In addition, the reason that we're doing that is because road maintenance is something that is going to cost us
No, I'm not.
In perpetuity. Road maintenance is something that has to happen, just from wear and tear, as everybody knows, you will constantly have to put money into your roads. So that expense is not going away. The expense that we have now, the revenue that we get right now, our revenue structure for fixing roads is not enough to maintain, as everyone knows around town. Chapter 90 is not covering all of our expenses. Therefore, we have roads in deplorable condition, we have a funding gap. The only way that we feel that we can fill that gap is through additional tax levy. Our suggestion to do that is for a specific override, specific to that project only, only road maintenance, and cannot be spent on anything else. So there was an article in the paper, I believe, or a letter to the editor, that said we could spend on everything else, on anything else. That is not the case. That is not true. So if you want more information, you can contact me directly, you can review our website,